Welcome to the Select Board meeting. Also referred to as the Board of Selectment because it's still our official name. We continue to change it, which we've been trying to do now for three years. I welcome everybody here tonight, Monday, June 12th, 2023. And as you know, under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20F, this meeting is being reported. In terms of acknowledges and recognitions, I'm really honored tonight to be able to honor somebody who has served on the Beach Committee for 19 years. Tim St. Michelle, many of you know. And there's a citation here I wish to read. "Be it known that the Westport Board of Selectmen hereby expresses their sincere appreciation to Tim St. Michelle in recognition of his many years of dedicated service to the town of Westport. Tim became a member of the Beach Committee in 2003, a position he proudly held for 19 years until his retirement in July of 2022. On behalf of the citizens of Westport, we extend our sincere gratitude for your many years of dedication to our town." This is signed by the five Select Board members. Tim, congratulations. We'd love to get a picture of you with the Selectman holding this.
Oh, I'm holding it forward.
This is always an issue here, but because it's going to be set up, plenty of places here. So watch the wire. You can try to sweeten it as best you can. Law will direct us to this problem.
Ready?
Thank you.
Can I just grab one with the Selectman first while you're standing up here?
All right.
Because I can put it on Twitter.
Yeah. It's hot because it's just going to come back up later.
Yeah, we should take a picture.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now, we have a good agenda tonight, and I would point out to our visitors and guests that tonight we will have an executive session. So later on, we have to clear the area. Do not take that personally, as I always say. And one of the more important items for tonight is, of course, the lifeguard staffing update from the Beach Committee. So...
Liz Collins.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Liz decided she asked us to move her because she wanted family.
She what?
She asked to move it to a different date because she wanted family here.
Another date?
Yeah.
Okay.
July.
July.
They host their fan club?
Guys, go ahead.
You can stay.
Enjoy the night.
Good night, everyone.
Take care.
We had another acknowledgement on the agenda, but she's not here tonight.
Yeah, that person will be acknowledged later on and could not be available for us tonight. So anyway, we want to change the batting order here because the Beach update is important, and we have people here, including members of the press, and we want to do that first. So I'll invoke, I don't know, what do you call it? We used to call it executive privilege or something like that?
Sure. Chairs discretion.
Discretion. And then the other items we can do, and also we'll probably move up item 4B, which is Elephant Rock Beach Club, so that the gentleman who here represents the club won't have to stay all night, although we are welcome to, sir. Okay, so we're going to discuss, it's an action item, is item 4C, a lifeguard staffing update from the Beach Committee. Now, Jim, I understand you'll be making the update for us.
I can give you the update, yes. So it's been quite a bit of work done over the last two weeks with the Beach Committee, Dana Stewart, and the Recreation Department, Perry Long, Sean Leach, all has been involved as well. We missed Tim St. Michael already.
They did.
But they've been able to reach out. Right now, we have, I think, commitment from five guards that are willing to come down to the state beach, to the town beach and work. We have another three guards that are taking the class this week and will be certified by the end of the week. And we have an additional lifeguard who has applied, who will be getting a certification. He just got it this past weekend. We just don't have a copy of it yet. So right now, we're at about nine lifeguards that we feel pretty confident about, and that's usually our standard number of guards that we have down there. We also met with Chris Boyle from the State Beach, Horse Neck Beach. He's going to come down the first week and work with the new guards and train them on some of the surf rescues, just to make sure that they're up to date and up to speed. They should be with the certifications anyway, but Horse Neck's a little different than some of these other places, so it's good to get some experience down there. We're talking to one of the guards now, or one of the applicants, who we believe would make a great head lifeguard, and he seems interested. So things are positive right now, and not betting 100%, but we're close.
Okay.
We may need a special meeting with the Board of Selectmen over the next week, week and a half, just to make the appointments, so that we can get them on the week before last week of June, and make sure they're on board and ready for the Fourth of July weekend.
Will this enable us to keep the beaches open throughout the summer, including weekdays?
Yes. If we can get nine, we should be seven days a week. Right now, we're definitely five, and we're hoping for the seven days.
Okay.
But it would be weekends and three days during the week, and again, we're hoping for the seven days.
Well, that's good news.
That's good news.
Questions?
Perry Long put in quite a bit of work. I mean, he's called every swim team, every Red Cross certification program from Tottenham, Rainham, Newport, to get these things going, so...
Mr. Perry Long is a member of the Beach Committee who addressed us last meeting and did a lot of work to move this thing along. Questions, comments from the Select Board members?
I just appreciate the strong effort. Hopefully, we'll make it through the summer.
Good job.
Good work. Make sure the Beach Committee understands our appreciation for the effort.
We'll let them know.
Thank you as well.
Also, going forward, we still need to look at maybe putting this under the Recreation Department, so that we can have... In talking with some of these other communities, like Newport, they actually stopped recruiting back in November, December for some of these lifeguards, so, you know, it's really something now that almost has to be done almost year-round, just to keep it going.
What, in your view, was, or the view of the Beach Committee, caused this to happen, this good news lately? Was it simply the reaching out by Mr. Long and the Beach Committee?
Reaching out, setting up a life-saving cause for, you know, three or four of these, actually, the younger, they're Westport students, to get them in onboard, so that helped, just getting the word out. And a lot of people wait till the last minute. But we've been competing against some of these other state beaches, and they're offering bonuses and different things that we may have to do in the future, but right now, we're not doing.
Yeah, we talked about that. There's some long-term needs here to be addressed, but we'll take this one step at a time. But this is good news tonight. Anybody from the public wish to make a comment? Okay, I appreciate that report. That's good news. The people will want to hear about this, and there'll be some press on this, so it's always nice to have good news for the press. And that includes the shorelines, and I don't think they're here tonight, but they'll be interested as well. I did receive a call from them. Any further questions on this item? There's no vote we have to take tonight. Moving ahead, as expected, and as you mentioned, we may have to have a special meeting to appoint these lifeguards.
That's correct.
We'll do that without question as soon as possible. Okay, any other discussion on this item? If not, then that closes this item, and we'll move on to other business. The next item is for B, and as mentioned, we want to move this up so the gentleman from the Elephant Beach Rock Club representing them can be here. And the request is, I have to read the request. The request is from the Elephant Rock Beach Club to add an additional crosswalk on Atlantic Avenue to coincide with their recently added ADA-compliant handicap grant. Mr. Hardnett?
Yeah, we had a request for the, sorry, for the crosswalk. It's right where they're crossing from the parking lot to the ramp. I don't believe we ended up getting a report from the Department. It has not come in. I would recommend approval, subject to the police report, favorable police report.
Yeah, and I would hope that would be the case. Comments, questions?
I'll move those to the bill.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comments on this motion from the Board? If not, any comments in the public, Mr. Sipper?
Yes.
Please come to the microphone and identify yourself. We know who you are now.
I'm George Croll. I'm on the Board of Elephant Rock. Last year, I came before you to get a crosswalk. That was our first crosswalk. And that goes directly from the parking lot to the beach. We realized as a Board, as the Board, we looked at it again, we just closed that entrance to the parking lot because there's cars coming in and going out. There are little kids running across that crosswalk. There's just too much traffic there. So we moved the vehicle. The cars all have to go to the west end now to enter the parking lot. It's only going to be, we put up two fences there, and it's only going to be for people to look across to the beach. But with our ramp now that we have, we need another, it's got to go a little bit farther to the east, like 15 feet. So the police, one of the police officers did leave me a voicemail about two weeks ago, and I asked, and he said, "I don't know really how you want it." I said, "I want it, you know, one goes this way, the other one's got to go that way from the same starting point." So he was going to look up, and he said, "I'm not sure if we can do that." And I said, "If not, then a longer, a wider crosswalk." And I also need the sign, if you are going on Atlantic Avenue, you're going west, the sign, the crosswalk sign there, you really should be back about another 20 or 30 feet because people can fly in through there, and they're looking at the Beach Club that way and not the people coming out of the parking lot. So if we can move that back like 25 or 30 feet, it'd be great, too.
Okay.
That's it.
So you'll continue to work with the police?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and this motion that's been made and seconded is contingent upon the police approving it. I would expect a good outcome here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? None. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay.
I think they're going to grab their mic.
Okay, go ahead. It'll take a two-minute recess to help me. All right. Okay, we'll let you finish up. Thank you for being here. Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go back to the top of the agenda. There are no public hearings tonight. That was, would have been night of number one. Licenses and Permits, number 2A, there's only one item under Licenses and Permits. I will read it. Request from Coastal Wine, from Coastal Wine Trail of Southeastern New England for a one-day farmer slash winery beverage license for the Annual Wine, Cheese, and Chocolate Festival, being held at the Westport Fairgrounds on Saturday, June 17th, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. What words, Jim? I think you get the drift. Jim, tell us about this, if you would.
I believe they did this last year as well. It's a, we do have a police report. They are recommending approval, just subject to the details, being hired, and that all beverages be consumed on-site. This is a festival, it'll be July 17th, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. Recommend approval.
It was a pleasure of the committee.
I'll move those recommended, police details, et cetera.
I'll second. Do we know why they waited till the 11-hour? Do we hold something up there, or?
They came to us, and I told her it needs to be earlier next year.
Yeah.
They came to us like the week before, like, it came just right after our last, right after the last meeting. So there was nothing, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I did tell her that, and I actually just got the last MDA approval this morning.
Yeah, they cut it a little close for their...
It's pretty complex with the farmer winery, with MDA approval and stuff. It was, it was pretty close, but, I mean, we were able to get it all in, thank goodness, because this has been being advertised for a long time, but...
Well, thank you for your efforts as well, Paul. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? None? None opposed? I vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next category is Appointments and Resignations. 3A is requests from John Perry to be appointed to the Long-Term Building Committee. I believe you have his resume in the package. I know him. He came in and spoke to me and Jim. He's been involved in the town before and has done a lot of work for other towns, I understand. In any event, this is the Long-Term Building Committee. And Jim, what is your recommendation here?
Yeah, he's been in a few times to talk about the high school project, the high school reuse, reuse of the existing older high school on Main Road. He's familiar with all the reports. He's actually gone through all the reports when the school building committee was looking to either use that building or build on a new site. So he's very familiar with the project. He's an architect. He's been involved in the master plan years ago. I think he'd be a good addition to the Long-Term Building Committee.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the committee?
It's more of him giving a nice detailed description of what he wants to do.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded.
Do we have, does that one have expiring terms?
We've been doing a year.
Year, okay.
Yeah, so we, well, see, he's already, if we, this motion is approved, he will then be on the committee for one year. You don't have to be appointed later.
Well, we're not going to reappoint him just till the end of June, right? We're reappointing him for a year.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay. Just checking.
Which only makes sense. I know Mr. Perry, and I speak well for him. He'll do a good job for us. Okay, so we had a motion, I believe. Yep. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. 3B, B as in Bravo, review and appoint fiscal year 24 committee and position appointments. Okay, and this is with the attached list. And this is, sometimes takes a while, but sometimes not. We can go through that. Jim, what's your plan here? What do you recommend as we go through this?
I may defer it to Paul a little bit on this. She's done a great job of organizing this since last year, and we're still working through some of the minor details, but we're getting there. This will be the first group of appointments. She's still reached out, she's reached out to all the chairpeople of most of the committees, if not all the committees, asking them to reach out to their members to see if they are interested. These are ones that have gotten back to her that are interested in being reappointed. So on this, this list here, this, we can go through the highlighted ones, are Board of Selectment appointments. We have the names in there from last year. Those can change if the Board wants to change those. That's up to the Board. Again, we'll have a list next, next meeting with the remaining appointees, but everybody on this list that's in front of you is ready to be appointed or reappointed.
Okay. Now, in the past, maybe Shawna, you can help me here. Did we do like town meeting and say, put a hold on it?
Yeah, we did.
Or just zip right through?
Yeah.
So if anybody wishes to discuss any of these candidates, just say, "Hold," then at the end, we'll take note of that. At the end, we'll discuss it. Is that where we are?
Do we have more of that?
I think we do.
I thought, I think we do.
So, and we should probably hold on the ones where Brian is there, and then hold
on any if you don't want to be on that committee anymore.
Okay.
And then if you want to talk, then we can.
All right, well, if that be the plan. So I'm going to start to read. We can take turns reading here. I know Ann Boxler wants to read here.
All right. All right. Is she ready? Step it up, you got it. Okay.
Well, I was going to start, so you could, you know, catch your breath, but if you want to dig in, I'm game.
I figure we'll just go around. I'll do the first page. How about that? I'll do the first page. ADA Transition Plan Committee, 6/30/2023, Boxler and ADA, can I read their names regularly? ADA Transition Plan Committee, 6/30/23, Richard Brewer. Affirmative Action Officer, James Hartnett. Affordable Housing Trust Fund, 6/30/2024, Ann Boxler. Agricultural Commission, 6/30/2023, Norman Anderson. Agricultural Commission, 6/30/2023, Raymond Elias.
Can I just ask a question? Sorry. You're saying 2023, but this is ending 2023.
That's more of a reference of they expire, too. You don't really have to say...
So we're just going to reappoint them, so they're not...
I don't have to say those names. Why do I have to be reappointed if I'm not expiring till 2024?
2024, that was like, just, that was more than one year.
All right. Agricultural Commission, Jaclyn White. Do you want me to read the one that Brian's not, like?
Let's hold on the Ag Open Space.
Agricultural Open Space Preservation Trust Fund Council, hold. American with Disabilities Act Coordinator, James Hartnett. Audit Committee, Richard Brewer. Audit Committee, John Francois Packwin. The Bike Walking Path Committee, Steve...
Bet.
Oh, Bet and Low, Steve Willett, Gail Rodricks. Board of Appeals, Cynthia Kozewitz. And George Delges, Bristol County Advisory Board, again, we have to hold.
No, that's Richard Brewer.
No. For me, you can...
I need a...
Fire away.
Jesus. Buzzards Bay Action Committee, hold on that. Cable Advisory Board, Steve Willett. Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Richard Brewer.
I think that's Brian, Brian wanted to reappoint it to that one.
Okay, and Brian Valcourt. Chief Procurement Officer, James Hartnett. Climate Resiliency Committee, John Bullard, Robert Daler, Shawna Schufelt, and we need one physician held, Philip Weinberg, and James Whiten. Commission on Disability, Sue Sherman. Community Preservation Committee, John Bell, Betty Slade, Dale Weber, David Ruda, and Valerie Bill.
Community Service Officer.
The Community Service Officer, David Ruda.
David Ruda.
You want me to take over?
Yeah, go ahead.
The Community Service Officer, Michael Borden, Michael Kelly, Stephen Kovar, Samantha McGuire, Jacob Martin, Maggie Norvosa, Richard Rodricks, Raquel Rodricks, Michael Ruself. Conservation Commission and Soil Conservation Board, Kevin Carter, Paul Jankus. Council on Aging, Irene Buck, Antonio Sostodio, Marie Fontaine, we'll hold on that one, open spot for Bill Gifford. Council on Aging, Muriel Kazaz...
Kozak.
Kazak. Eileen Moncrae.
Moncrief.
Cultural Council, Mary Seer, Carol Vidal, Nancy Whiten. Custodian of the Tax Title Properties, Sue Brayton. E-911 Coordinator, Paul Duhon. Economic Development Task Force, Steve Willett. Energy Committee will put a hold on. Harbor Master, Raymond Jarvis, Ransom Morris, Joshua Mosher, Douglas Murphy, Jonathan Paul, James Perry, William Shaw Jr., Gary Tripp. Health Insurance, Portability, and Accountability Act Coordinator, Jim Hartnett. Infrastructure Oversight Committee, Steve Willett.
Okay. Internet Advisory Board, David Cole, and Shawna Schufelt. We'll hold on the Long-Term Building Evaluation Committee, Brian Valcourt. The MBTA's Growth Management Task Force, Steve Willett. Municipal Census Supervisor slash Assistant Registrar, Carrie Fontaine. Municipal Coordinator of the Right-to-Know Law, Brian Legenda. I assume that's, yes, correct, that's our fire steward.
Yeah.
I thought the name is... Okay. We know who it is. Okay, Municipal Liaison to State Ethics Commission, James Hartnett. The National Organization on Disability Representative, James Hartnett. Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Jason Camara. And also Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Joseph Ferreira. Principal Records Access Officer, Bernadette Oliver.
That's probably not right.
That would be Chris Stinson.
Okay.
Yeah, hold on that one.
Hold, okay. Public Safety Staffing Committee, Richard Brewer. Public Wares, there are four, Eric Bates, Amy Bates, Emily Nickerson, Brett Silvier. Railroad Commissioner, Steve Willett. Recreation Commissioner, Andrea Dunbar. Recreation Commissioner, also Timothy Gillespie. Recreation Commissioner, Cindy Wilson. A number of reserve police officers, Antonio Sostodio, David Leek, Samantha McGuire, Michael Martin, Francois Napek, Thomas Plord, Julius Rosario, David Simko, Amy Lynn Smitty, and Brian Souza. The Safety Regulation Board, Steve Willett. School Building Committee, Shawna Schufelt. Secondary Records Access Officer, Christopher Capone, and also James Hartnett.
Agreed. All right, Secondary Records Access Officer, Brian Legenda, Amy Messia, Paul Pearson. It says Pelletier, Pelletier.
Keith Pelletier.
It's Keith. Shelffish Advisory Committee, John W. Borden, Kenneth Manchester, Dora Atwater-Milliken, Ronald Savaria, Richard Smith. Shelffish Constable, Raymond Jarvis, Ransom Morris, Joshua Mosher, Douglas Murphy, Jonathan Paul, James Perring, William Shaw Jr., Gary Tripp. Sickling Bank Committee, Nicole Pearson, Shawna Schufelt. SMHG Representative, Jim Hartnett and Susan Brayton. Southeastern Mass Health Group Representative, James Hartnett. Southeastern Regional Transit Authority Board Rep, Richard Brewer. Surf Ed Alternate, Jim Hartnett. Surf Ed Commissioner, Steve Willett. Taxes at the Program Committee, Steve Willett. Taxes at the Program Committee, Manny Sawes. Waterways Oil Spill Coordinator, Brian Legenda. Wellness Coordinator, Southeastern Mass Health Group, Bernadette Oliver.
Hold.
Hold, that was right, yep, Bernadette again. Westport Rep to Diamond, Paul Jennings. Westport River Watershed Counsel, Steve Willett. Wiring Inspector, Paul Burke. William Pumont, Dane Winchester.
That's it. Danny, sorry, I didn't give a page for you. Next year, you can do it.
Not yet, this is going to fill.
Okay, now we have the holds.
We're going to move the first. So let's move, I moved the list we just made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move the list of those we just went through. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to make sure that the AGCOM, three appointees were regular members because we have alternates as well as regular voting members, and the three that are up for tonight are active in the, in the commission, and I would like to make sure they become regular voting members.
That would be Norm Anderson, Raymond...
Ray Elias and Jackie White. Yeah, they attend almost all the meetings. Yeah, who were approved. Yeah, but they're on the list right now to be approved. Where the middle of them are.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we've covered this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motion had been made and seconded, right?
Yep.
Okay, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? None. The motion carries unanimously. Now, the holds, the next?
Yes.
I didn't make a note of it.
So the, I did, so the Ag Open Space Trust Fund Council, was that a Select Board representative?
It's a Select Board representative.
Does anybody want to do it?
I've got lunch already.
What, what are you talking about?
So we need a Select Board Representative of the Ag Open Space Preservation Trust Fund Council.
Yeah, I'll do that.
So Dick is volunteering for that.
Okay.
And then the next one we had was the Buzzards Bay Action Committee.
Yeah, I would suggest that either be Amy Messia or Michael Burgess.
Should we wait on that one?
Buzzards Bay. Michael's been attending, suggests Michael, the town planner. We can wait till next week if...
Wait and, like, ask?
Yeah, let's make sure to get...
We're going to move the first. So let's move, I moved the list we just made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move the list of those we just went through. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to. Sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, we just, we had a motion.
You missed out on the discussion.
Do you wish to?
I just wanted to make sure that the AgCom, three appointees were regular members because we have alternates as well as regular voting members. And the three that are up for tonight are active in the, in the commission, and I would like to make sure they become regular voting members.
That would be Norm Anderson, Raymond.
Ray Elias and Jackie White.
Yep.
Yeah, they attend almost all the meetings.
They're who were approved. They're on the list right now to be approved.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we've covered this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Motion had been made and seconded, right?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none. The motion carries unanimously. Now, the holds, the next?
Yes.
I didn't make a note of it.
So the, I did, so the Ag Open Space Trust Fund Council, was that a select board representative?
It's a select board representative.
Does anybody want to do it?
I've got lunch already.
What, what are you talking about?
The, so we need a select board representative of the Ag Open Space Preservation Trust Fund Council.
Yeah, I'll do that.
So Dick is volunteering for that. And then the next one we had was the Buzzards Bay Action Committee.
Yeah, I would suggest that either be Amy Messia or Michael Burgess.
Should we wait on that one?
Buzzards Bay. Michael's been attending. I suggest Michael, the town planner. We can wait till next week if.
Wait and like ask.
Yeah, let's make sure to get.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's fine.
So the next one we have is Climate Resiliency Committee. So I am one of the select board representatives, but we did have two. The Climate Resilience Committee is a rather large committee, and also Mr. Valcourt hadn't been attending, so I would welcome another member of the select board on there, but I don't actually think it's strictly necessary personally. If anyone wants to join us, please vote for them.
Well, people can always join at a later date to put the names forward.
Yeah, so let's leave that one off.
I think we're well represented.
Thank you. And then the next one I had was, so we had a Bill Gifford on Council on Aging, so I think we did that one, we'll just be open and see if we get another candidate. And then we had Energy Committee, because Brian Valcourt was on that one. Mr. Sors, that sounds like a good one for you. Are you already on the Energy Committee?
You got the Energy Committee on the Energy Committee?
Yeah, I guess I'll do that.
Okay. See what was made.
And then.
The Council on Aging, Shauna, that's the morning meetings, right?
Yeah.
It's the morning, yeah, just so people know.
Well, it's not an actual member, it's just a.
You're talking about board meetings.
Yeah, whatever it takes to be on the Council on Aging, rep, it's.
Yeah, well, I believe there is a liaison for the select board.
Tuesday mornings?
It's Tuesday morning, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. The second Tuesday of the month. So, yeah, that's, that's, I guess that's why I'm there.
I can't think of that.
Because I don't have a real job, you see.
And so then the next one we skipped over was the Long Term Planning Town Building Evaluation Committee. So Brian was the select board representative, so we need a select board representative.
I said I would take that last week.
And said she would take that. And then we have a Principal Records Access Officer, I think we can go ahead and vote on that one, that would be Kristen Stinson. And then Wellness Coordinator for Southeast Mass Health Group, that would also be Kristen. So I will move Dick Brewer for Ag Open Space Trust Fund. Manny Sors for the Energy Committee. Anne Boxler for the Long Term Planning Building. Kristen Stinson as the Principal Records Access Officer and Kristen Stinson as the Wellness Coordinator, Southeast Mass Health Group.
And Principal's access, Principal Records Assets, did you say that?
Yeah, Principal Records Access Officer, Kristen.
I'll move second.
So the motion made and seconded on all, goes all, all the holds, that's.
Yeah.
Discussion, further discussion? I just had one question. Jim, what is SMHG Representative?
Southeastern Mass Health Group.
Oh, okay.
That's the health insurance for the town employees.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none opposed? Paul, it's unanimous. Well, thank you.
You and I are on ADA Transition Plan Committee, have we ever had a meeting for that?
No. No, I've been on that for years as yourself. I think that was probably intended to be a short-term committee relating to transition, and probably at some point, maybe it should be discontinued. But I don't know, would we be talking to the Disabilities Commission about that? Who gave us the answer on that?
So there was an ADA Transition Plan that had to be done a number of years ago, and I think it was done when Lain Ostrom was here, so that was probably seven to 10 years ago. It may need to be updated. I can check and get back to you.
Okay, let us, let us know. Because we don't need the committee in mind, so we'll just continue it. The work may have been completed.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
No, no. I didn't know who the, who is the chair on that committee. Do we know that, Paul?
It's like, no, I can look it up for you though.
Yeah. Okay. So in terms of the next go-around, what will we be doing two weeks from now in terms of further appointments?
So Paul is still reaching out to our committees, chairman and committees, to see if our people are still interested in serving, so we have another list of people fitting in within the next couple of weeks. Or anybody that's still interested in serving, that's been on a committee, please contact Paul so that we can get you on the agenda and get you reappointed prior to the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
And if you are so excited to volunteer for a committee but think it's too late, it is not too late.
No.
If you want to volunteer for something, just raise your hand and we will find a spot. Do it.
Act now.
And just remember, anybody that's been reappointed needs to come in and get sworn in, otherwise they cannot vote after July 1st, so.
Okay.
See Kristen.
See Kristen, Town Clerk's Office.
And that's all the reappointments as well, I assume.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, all right. Paul, I'll have to stick here.
Got a big pile down there for her, or you will have a big pile.
All right. Okay. So that concludes 3B, thank you. Now, action items, this is section four, and there's only one action item remaining because we did the others. 4A is a request from the Town Accountant to approve year-end transfers. Jim, maybe you could read this for us, I can read too, but you know what they're about.
Sure. We have $2,000 from employee benefits to the Board of Appeals. This will cover the additional filings if they've had this year. $115,000 from long-term debt, principal to interest. This was just placed in the wrong line item at the beginning of the year. It's both going to debt, it's just going to principal as opposed to interest. $25,000 from the Fire Department Personnel Services to the general expenses. This is to cover, they're replacing some fire hoses and some other general equipment. And then $40,000 from the Highway Department Personnel Services to the general expenses. They're looking to get some, they're replacing some of the MOA attachments to their tractors right now.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none. Paul, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item is five discussion, but there are no discussion items tonight. We had action items. So the next item on the agenda is six, the Town Administrator Report. Jim?
Yes, I didn't get a hard copy out, but I'll go over some updates. Town Hall computers, they're currently updating all the town hall computers with new laptops and monitors. They started last week. Downstairs here in Town Hall has been done, they started upstairs today. I got mine today, took a little while, but it's great, what a difference, just the speed of it itself is a long time coming, so. Keith has done a nice job organizing that and getting that done. It's a lot of work just to update these things and swap them over.
Oh, yeah.
Takes some time. He actually brought in another company to help and load some of these things up, and that's kind of moved the process a little quicker. We have the special election schedule for July 25th. We've updated the town's website, there's links to the budget, there's links to voter information, financial reports that have been done. Those are all on the town website, you can be found on the main page by clicking in the red banner at the top. I'd also say if any of the residents out there are looking for additional information that's not on the website, please contact our office and we'll try to provide it for them. Go from there. Staffing, like most communities and businesses, we are experiencing some shortages, it's difficult to fill some of these positions once they become vacant. Some of the salaries, we'd like to bump up to the lawn run, but we're getting there. We had a, in the Cemetery Department, the foreman will be out on leave for a period of time. Steve Souza, who used to be the foreman at the cemetery, has agreed to step up and kind of take over that responsibility, but it's still pretty short. One staff person in the cemetery, this is a busy time of year for them with the grass, grass growing, full tilt, that'll slow down over the next couple of weeks. They're doing foundations for a lot of the monuments that were, burials that they had over the winter. So, again, it's a busy time, we're doing the best we can with the staff we have. The Highway Department has kind of had to step up, the current employees, they do not have hoisting licenses. So the Highway Department has agreed to dig or do any excavation over there that's needed, and they've been great to work with. The transfer station is still down, an employee that's been posted and advertised, we're looking to fill out as soon as we can, but there's only two employees over there now, so if somebody calls out sick or on vacation, we don't have enough in the transfer station staff to man the facilities, so we've been reaching out to cemetery staff and the Highway Department to cover some of those shifts when needed. And then Dana Stewart, as I mentioned earlier, has been working with the Beach Committee to recruit some of the lifeguards. She's done a nice job organizing and kind of setting some spreadsheets up and contacting, reaching out to people over there last year and some, some of the applicants that have qualified, that have submitted applications this year. The last thing I'd like to mention is on June 24th, Senator Rodrick's office and Representative Schmidt's office is going to be recycling an energy drive. They're going to be sending out notifications to all the NSTAR, National Grid and Emerson customers, letting them know this is going to be at the old high school from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There is a cost of $20 per vehicle to get rid of stuff, but they'll be accepting furniture, electronics, stuff like TVs and monitors is an additional cost, meaning the fridge is $10, comb batter is $5, and so we will get this up on the website tomorrow. There's also going to be a press release or a press conference on Friday. With Senator Rodrick's at the old high school and Representative Schmidt. If anybody's interested in attending, let me know and I will.
What's the date on that again?
So the excitement will be June 24th. They're going to have a press release or a press conference on Friday at 10:00 at the old high school.
Well, let me add my praise to those people who helped us out with the staffing issues that Jim has incurred to. They've been a great service to the town of Westport, and we thank them.
So Jim, you talked about the financial stuff, I saw some really good information got posted online. Do we know, do we have any update on the town report?
The town report, I don't want to say the end of this week because I'm not sure, but we're trying to get it done the end of this week. Denise goes on vacation next week. We will have it done by the end of June, I'm hoping to have it done soon.
But all the financial information that would have been in that report is already on the.
Yep, it's all on the website. And if anybody needs any specific information for any of the departments that they would normally get from the town reports, they can contact us, I can send that out separately. So that information is there, it's just not correlated into one document.
Thank you.
I'd like to just make a comment about the special election, your report is very clear. I just wonder, should we be doing something else? I know, I looked at the website today and saw a lot of material there about the special election, including a little write-up, and then also the citizens' report, so-called, and information about registering or whatever. We want to keep up the presence of this issue and keep it in the fore, just throwing it out for any discussion. We don't have to discuss it tonight other than the Town Administrator's Report, but maybe something to think about for the next couple of meetings as we get to that date, which is fast approaching.
Well, they, I think important date, like an important deadline coming up is July 5th is the last day to register to vote for that election. And July 18 is the last day to request a mail-in ballot, so I definitely think as the clerk's office makes that, those things available, that we should be publicizing them again.
Okay. Well, let's keep that on the agenda, every meeting before the election for public awareness. Let's see where we are here. Okay, the next item is the approval of minutes. Manny, I think, look at the AM, used to that, but.
Did I, no.
Not anymore. This is the minutes of May 30th.
You move it? Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none? Passes and answers, thank you. The report on the bill warrant.
Last week's bill warrant was signed, it was, it was small, no issues with it, and then I just had to sign the bill warrant for the lump sum payments for the school system. I just did it yesterday.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, the next item is the nine, Select, Selectmen Liaison Committee Reports and Suggestions for Future Agenda Discussion Action. I think last week we started at that end, this week we started at this end. Anything you wish to report on or suggest for future discussion?
At this time.
Okay. Steve?
I don't think I had, the bike we met briefly, and they're going to be set up at the watershed day coming up, is that the 24th? That's coming up anyways down the head, they're going to have a table set up. I would like to see in the future that we touch base on forestry management, and unfortunately, I think we're going to have to address deer management down the line. This is something I was telling you last weekend, we were short riding, so 70 deer within, within a half an hour. So it's, obviously our forestry is growing thicker, and unfortunately, the deers are getting thicker. So we might have to come up with a plan because we're really moving up in the, in the county of the state. And the other thing is just the thanks to public safety, there's still been a lot of crazy accidents and fires, and we thank them for what they do. Also, the Highway Department for the Memorial Day flag setup, I think I forgot to mention that last time, put the flags up and taken it down, much appreciated.
Okay, I guess I'm next. The, I don't think I've been to any committee meetings of late. I will attend as the liaison for the Board of Selectmen, the Council on Aging meeting tomorrow. At the next meeting, June 26th, we will have, as you discussed earlier, Mr. Anthony Roselli, who is the Town Accountant, he would like to present either in person or on the screen, perhaps you can arrange that, Jim. He will communicate with, with you, Paul, around that as to what, whether he can make it. He wanted to be here in person because he hasn't been here in a while, he looks forward to that, but, you know, he's got a long drive and things may get mixed up, so we'll let you know on that. And the next meeting is the last one before just July 4th?
Yes.
Yeah, we probably want to just talk about the July 4th parade, see how it's going, and what our plan is for attendance, and I want to tell people about my new pickup truck now. But anyway, because it holds a lot, holds a lot of candy. But anyway, just, you know, have that coordinated, and also to, maybe, Jim, you could speak with, is it Caitlin who's running that?
Paul knows more than.
Yeah, maybe just to update us, anything we need to know, to tell the public at the next meeting, or if Caitlin or the other person wishes to come in and speak.
Yeah. I'd like to. Thought you were saying Paul is some kind of significant. Spotlight.
All right, so we'll put that on the agenda. Okay, that'll be quick. And that's all I have. Sean?
Internet Advisory Committee, we still have David Cole is going, talking to everyone. So Entry Point was in Dartmouth for a meeting the other day, so Renee and David met with them, have a conversation and attend the Dartmouth. They're really looking at whether it makes sense to enter some kind of regional agreement with, because the more, some of the financing options that they're looking at now involve private, private partnerships, so the kind of the bigger space you have, the more consumers you have, the more attractive it is. So they're looking at that, but we're continuing to look at all the possible options. David's really keen to kind of showcase around town what the high-speed internet is doing for town employees and how it's helping their jobs, and look for opportunities to leverage. We've got this high-speed fiber backbone now from all the town offices, that there's kind of a sense that nobody really, really understands what the capabilities are, so he's continuing to look at that. Climate Resilience, we just have miscellaneous meetings all the time, but Climate Resilience, a lot of work going on. They are going to be at River Day on June 24th.
It is 24th, yeah.
Yeah, so June 24th is River Day. A lot of Westport organizations are going to be out at the, at the head. I think that's, that's been a really good event in previous years, so I'm really looking forward to River Day. And apparently now we drop off our recycling on the way to River Day, so that's good.
I don't know whether they're going to park the shovel lessons, but, okay.
We, the School Building Committee, so the School Building Committee, there's still loose ends. The biggest loose end that's being worked on now is the irrigation system. So obviously, we had a bout of no rain, and then the irrigation system had a problem, so I don't know if it's been fixed, but we're challenged with the irrigation for the fields, and we're challenged with, you have multiple, you have the nursery, you have the electricians, you have the plumbers, you have like all these different people involved. So they're working through that, but I don't, I don't know if they have worked through it yet, but it's definitely trying to save the fields before the fields are not savable. There are also, some stuff went on with the roof, so we're still looking at the roof and something with the roof. So that has not quite wrapped up, that school building stuff is still, still on budget, but we just have these loose ends that are going on. And I think, I think that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Ian?
I have not had any meetings.
I failed to mention earlier in Jim's report, as we praised the number of people who have helped out, I wanted to mention and failed to do so, this is near and dear to my heart, heart down at the Westport Point, there's a paving job done down there at the circle that's been long in coming, it's looking really good. I saw it, Chris, recently, congratulated him and thanked him myself. I saw it, Chris, recently, congratulated him and thanked him myself. So I think there's still striping that has to be done, marking and blocks and spots and so on and so forth, but a great job was done down there. We appreciate that. Okay, that concludes item nine. Ten are comments and statements from the public.
If you can stand, get in line.
Well, you have anything you want to talk about?
Yeah, nobody.
Okay. So they will be done tonight. Boards and Committee vacancy list, well, we have that, and it continues to be rife with opportunities, as Shauna has mentioned earlier, and we always mention that, and we hope we get the people who would come forth. Westport has so many people, as these appointments show tonight, we would put their best foot forward and help the town in so many ways. The topic's not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting. I'm not aware of any. Paul, do you have any? Jim? Anybody else? Okay. Now, it's time to go into executive session, and I will read this, and I will also remind everybody that after I read this, we will come out of the executive session for the purpose of closing the regular meeting. So, the executive session tonight is pursuant to the provisions of MGL C-30A, Section 21A. The Chair declares an open meeting will have a detrimental effect to: A. Discuss employment agreement for the Director of Council on Aging; B. Discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, General Teamsters Local Number 251; and C. Approve the minutes of April 18th, 2023, and May 30th. It says 3023, but we assume that's 2023.
So I'm going to stick with it.
Second, Shauna Shufelt.
Motion made and seconded, this is roll call vote. Ready?
So is I. I stick with it.
Brewer, aye?
Aye, Shauna Shufelt, I am boxing.
We are now in executive session, the motion carries unanimously, Paula.